Y'all are ready, we'll go ahead. Charlie, would you do our invocation for us?
Well, we thank you so much for the opportunity to come together tonight peacefully and to serve this community. We thank you that you give us a day like today to enjoy this beautiful mountain community, and we thank you for all the tomorrows that are going to come just like it. We pray that you would be with us and help us to make wise decisions this evening and beyond, and we pray especially for our public safety, that you would keep them safe, and all of those in the communities that might be separated with COVID, Lord. We also pray that you would help them to continue to heal and that we would move past this epidemic soon, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Praise Jesus. To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a couple of changes I'm going to request to the agenda. Karen? The one you asked to move up is almost at the top. You okay there? Don't do me no favors. Item four, you said. And so I would suggest that item four be moved to the top of the zoning between where one of the reds will come to. And finally, we have one piece of unfinished business that I would like to add that would be regarding the ARPA funding. Any other changes? Anybody else?
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion. It's the agenda be approved with those changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's an error on item three in the owner's name. The correct owner of record is Randall L. Walker Jr., not Lamar Law.
Randall L.?
Walker Jr.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody have for our minutes from the January 2 special call meeting, January 2 deposition meeting, January 2 work session meeting, January 13 regular meeting, or January 24th special call meeting? Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes?
I'm going to be approved as written.
No second amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the financial report for January 31st. Each department should be at eight percent of their expenditure budget used. There are no departments over budget at January 31st. Overall, we are at six percent of the total revenue budget received and five percent of the total expenditure budget used. Total revenue received to date, $2,014,718. Total expenditures to date, $1,602,74.
Any questions on that? Thank you, Sandy. Under unfinished business, I'm going to ask Chief Kaufman to come forward. There were very interesting proposals regarding the ARPA funding and our efforts for road straining.
Yes, well, thank you for having us. Gilmore County Fire Rescue keeps four ambulances, frontline ambulances in service, and we keep two in reserve. So as we purchase new ambulances, we rotate them down to a reserve status. In 2020, under the CARES Act funding, we did purchase a new ambulance. In 2021, in the first quarter, we received a budgeted ambulance. And then part of the ARPA funding in August, September of '21, we have got approved for another ambulance, which is currently in build, and due to some supply chain interruptions, there is a delay in that. So it's going to be probably August, September of '22 before we take delivery of that truck. We have in our budget, our capital budget for '22, an additional ambulance. Just based on the delay in delivery and also the upcoming ARPA funding, we are proposing to take 200,000 of our capital budget towards ambulance and giving that money over to our department for straining. So we'd just like to retain the 20, 200,000 and move that over to 2023. And just with the contention upon ARPA funding this year, purchasing an ambulance for 2023, that keeps us on our schedule and wanting.
We do have the ambulance slotted for 2023.
Did we really pull on that?
That was a question that I have. I don't know did we, did or didn't. I thought we had, but we would need to agree what we had.
Is there urgency on this? As I said, I might see that we're standing on ARPA and further commitments made, what we have approved, make sure we're all the others.
I don't see that there's any terrible urgency on it. I think it's a good opportunity if that ambulance is still being slotted for '23 to do what we want to do with that driving. But I don't think they think it couldn't wait.
When we purchase, attend and build now.
It's currently waiting on chassis. It was first funding.
So it's your ARPA or?
There is one approved for 2022's capital budget as well.
Okay, so you're talking about 2023?
Total currently, we have one in, one in the bill waiting for a chassis. Then we have not a call out for bid on the 2022 capital purchase for ambulance. So this, the ARPA funding was in '21, it got approved late '21 and went out to, it got awarded to a bidder, I think in December.
Well, then the '23 ARPA funding, as the ambulance is there in there, would be one extra, and the 2022 ambulance that's in the funding capital budget would be a second ambulance. And this would be, either one of those would be 2023, is that time we get it?
About the time, maybe it was through chassis, the supply chain interruptions just causing a delay currently.
So what you're saying is the '22 ambulance will be here around August or so.
Correct. And that was an ARPA funded ambulance from late, from '21.
Now, for '23, there's money in the capital budget that we want to use on '23.
Yeah.
Or there's an ambulance currently slotted in the 23 ARPA funding.
There is.
Which we would get in '23.
If the ARPA funding that becomes available in '22, we would go out for bid, purchase, order bid, then we go out for purchase, and it would not be delivered until '23, just based on the six that I love to build right.
So essentially, there are two ambulances in play there, and only we will only be providing one more. And the question on that would be, would we want to do a, or whenever you check it out in the council, would we want to do a budget amendment to move that funding into the roads for road straining?
I don't have a problem with that. I'm just a little confused. I think it's very confusing when we throw it out.
Yes.
We need something, I need something to put together. I guess I know the facts.
Okay, I can second you. If I'm wrong, I can break it down.
I understand now. It's not time when we get, in the future, we get a little more, and we're just talking about this.
This came up very suddenly.
Probably to go urgent.
No.
I don't know.
We can, we can do that. Okay.
I appreciate the thought, then I'm very fine with it.
Okay.
So should we then do the budget amendment or wait?
What do you, specifically what are the reasons?
The capital budget has $203,000 in it for ambulance, and we would be getting it to be really deployed. The budget amendment would be to move 200,000 of that into the road department for straining, and the 20,000 that's left would be utilized for breakout gear that we need for fire.
Can you just raise that as a motion, right?
Yes.
No second amendment.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
And then you guys can see how, where to draw on your words.
It's Christmas, Jim.
Don't mess with good stuff.
Hey, I don't mean to be mistaken, but it's a little unfair to spring something out all of a sudden like this. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, discussion and possible action, then we sort of understand. I think while we decide, the proper figure for that would be, so I think if y'all are in agreement with that, I will test that.
Do you want to give, are you going to give some specifics of what areas we were thinking of?
Let him free wheel.
Of course, they already know which ones I'm suggesting, so. Okay, approval of that application about venue for minor or foreign language. Everything is in place for that. We actually had already, we weren't doing that there, so we had to start over. Now we make a motion and we agree with that application for a minor. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just like you guys a lot, so we wanted to see you back here. Thank you for being back here.
Is this Scooby in the lift? Discussion and possible action of Georgia power easements. This would be the one where they want to place one extra animal procurement off to the side of that part line in our easement.
Did we decide that that's building authority?
Okay, so that works for me. Would you prefer to the building authority? Now, something that is near and dear to my heart. For a period of time, a long time ago, we had a, I don't know if you would call it keep Gilmore beautiful, but there was a committee for a litter and so forth, and it finally sort of died out. And several years ago, we got a concept for the Keep Gilmore Beautiful Committee. They have been extraordinarily successful. I think a lot of that because they're all very passionate about it. They've worked really hard at it. Now, I mean, it's obvious to me that they're putting in many hours on this. We received a letter sort of praising the work that Keep Gilmore Beautiful has done. Listened accomplishments, successful electronics recycling events, yielding over 25 volunteers, 40 bags of trash at the Great American Cleanup, growing the Adopt a Road program to over 64 groups, and over 100 native volunteer hours, generating a positive cash flow through the aluminum can recycling program, and recycling over 6,000 pounds within the first reimbursement program, which allows local civic groups to partner with KTV and assist in the collection of cans in return for a portion of earnings. I would like to add to that, too, that they successfully affiliated the Gilmore County Keep, Keep Gilmore Beautiful with Keep America Beautiful, and have become a very productive and important part of that particular establishment as well. So one of the things that we wanted to do tonight was to praise these folks for all they have accomplished and just kind of bring to everybody's attention that we got folks out here that are doing a tremendous job, and we appreciate them. Now, I'm going to try to, from what little memory I have left, give you all the names, and I'm going to rely on y'all to either correct me or add whatever. So it's Ron Chetzlock, Jim Harris, Dr. Kay Cokely, Julie?
Camp.
Camp? Okay, Julie Camp. Did I forget anybody? Who did I forget?
Ashley McGowan.
Ashley McGowan, yes, sir.
My Key Cook?
I'm sorry.
My Key Cook? Yes.
My Key is not actually now on the, on that committee, but she was for a long time and did a wonderful job. And I don't want to forget the people, too, that have passed through on this committee, and maybe for whatever reason, they, they got off if somebody came in to replace them. Tom, who are you going to?
Karen Woodrow.
Karen, yeah. How can I forget Karen?
I'll just say, I mean, Karen, and then you have Betsy Shepherd, Jay Zipperman, I mean, the list goes on and on.
Yes.
There's some great leaders that.
Excellent. These, these are all the people that we want to praise. Ron?
We have several of our Adopt a Roadies as well here tonight.
Okay, good.
And that's what, Charlie, we should also recognize is how many, how many people do, and you may have mentioned that, how many people, Jim, do we have picking up trash on the side of the road that are citizens? Or Ron, you may know.
Right now, we have 62 groups that are active.
62 groups? So, and they pick up thousands of pounds of trash in here, helping to keep Gilmore beautiful. So thank you all so very much.
Thank you all. We, we really appreciate everything you do, and you can tell the difference. So that's, that's wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so we can try to read the zoning. And the first one is going to be actually number four. Jason and Leslie Prophet, Southside Church Street, from Seaway Commercial to R1 Residential Lowency. And that is, I don't know. We have the backtrack of number four on this agenda, not the same. Well, for Jason and Leslie Prophet, from Seaway Commercial to R1 Residential Lowency, this is, you told me move number four up. No, five is Jonathan Gray. Okay, well, we're already in four, we're going to finish four. Okay, so this is convert an old church to a residence. I have no problem with that myself, and we make a motion and it be approved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is everybody okay with moving number five up? Well, on the, on the work session, it was number three. So everything we all. All right. Number five, also known as?
Number four. We don't go back to number one now?
Yes, if they. Except that it was number five up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, for Jonathan Graves, this is from R1 Residential Lowency to A1 Agriculture. This is for a hobby livestock, a owner, and a residence. I believe this, the recommendation on this one from the planning board was denied. Make sure I have the right one on that now.
Great, yes.
Yeah. Now, I know we had some discussion on that amongst ourselves yesterday. I would make a motion based on the information that we have, that this would be denied.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we go back to number two. AKA number one.
Yeah, exactly.
For Cecil and Dorothy Townley, from A1 Agricultural to R1 Residential. This is to split enough acres from a large tract for daughters to build a home. And I believe we would probably want to recommend approval on this, intention on only the area that's split away from the, and I would make that one.
And you said that, yes, that's the area that we split off from, we did, R1, yes, second up.
How many acres is outside?
The size that will be split off would be 2.36 acres. Okay, may you? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three. This is for Randall L. Walker Jr., from R1 Residential Lowency to Agriculture. And it is for a hobby farm. Recommendation with approval. Now we make a motion and this be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, which brings us to six. Okay, maybe five. For Boyd Jackson Reese for Local Trust, A1 Agricultural to R1 Residential Lowency. This is to build two single family homes per year, and it would be a total of six that can be built. I would make a motion and this be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For Winona Watkins, degree. From A1 Agricultural to R1 Residential. This is to sell 1.64 acres to the adjacent owner.
This is the one.
I think this is the one that we want to keep it.
You'll need to remand it back to the planning commission, there was not a survey attached to the application.
Got it.
Pretty much.
Yes.
Okay. I would make a motion that this could be remanded back to the planning, the commission, or planning board, because we don't have all the requirements we need.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight is Assistant Corporation, from A1 Agricultural to R1 Residential, a single family home subdivision. I would make a motion that this be approved.
Is there anybody about to add a subdivision?
The maximum would be 50, given the acreage. Come on, come on.
The total, the total acreage on the parcel is 66 acres, and 1.5 per tract, they'll have 40, maybe 42 max, depending on how many acres it takes.
Thank you. I have a motion, any of you?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us to citizens wishing to speak. Anybody that would like to make any comment on any subject.
Kimberly Reckless, resident of John County. This morning I was awake in my garage, text messages.
I'm sorry, garage what?
Text messages.
Six messages.
Text messages. Texting, people texting.
Six messages. Well, that's not nearly as interesting.
I just want to share that with everybody. Had to get that out of the way. Unfortunately, I'm here before the board with something very serious. The matter that was, I was being texted about was our water treatment. The matter that was, I was being texted about was our water treatment and our water safety and our environmental stressed situation. As you may or may not know, I don't know, I assume that Mr. Parker is aware at this point, since the EPD is involved, he sits on that board, that we have been in contract, and I know since this is not within the Bailey Wake up, the board commissioners, it's an outside entity, and so maybe the commissioners are not aware of what's happening with our water and sewer authority.
Well, I've had a conversation with one of board members about that this afternoon, so I am aware of it.
Then you know that we are taking leaching products from waste management from the land, various landfills as far as Alabama that is being treated in our local small-scale treatment facilities and being dumped into our three rivers. Now, this didn't problem, then we start downstream, but the resolutions coming from downstream, because what we've done is we've created disaster for people downstream from us by dumping this waste product into our water supply.
Well, I will tell you what I was told by the waters and authorities. First of all, once it's treated and put back in, and of course, that's what happens, our water is treated there, it's put back into river. It's not put back in until it's treated and it's safe and it's good water to put in. What I'm told is that EPD has come out, they have examined the situation. They have told the water authority that everything's good. And my information is that they have also told Channel Two and Channel Eleven that they, EPD, have no issues beyond that.
Right, so you understand, Mr. Paris, with all due respect, we can't just be taking people's word for it.
Well, this is not just people, this is the EPD.
We can't take anybody's word for how our public safety, when it's at risk, we can't take them, anybody for their word for it. Even, like I said, as I said, outside of the rings, because that has a direct impact to us. Now, a couple months ago, and I told you this, I sat down with one of the watershed authority. They were doing this study, right, their job is to look at waterways. At that time, my discussion with them was concerns of developments in large scale, regional impact, and what the fact they might have on our waterways, wildlife, and health, public health. At that time, the discussion before this situation even came into play was that all waste product ends up in our groundwater and it ends up in our rivers, our streams, and lakes. But we can sit here and discuss, even Gilmer beautiful all we want, and how we have environmental clubs at our high school, but the reality is, we could potentially be facing a health crisis, and not just in this county, but could have created one downstream from us. Now, you all may be satisfied without you just, you know, we got good work coming out of, you know, from people who talk to EPD, but as a resident of Gilmer County, when the, when I look at the, now this is going before Congress, okay, the, of the United States of America, okay, where they discussed the dangers of these leaching, leached fluids that come from, now what we're talking about here, in case we don't know, is rainwater goes through landfills, that rainwater collects at the bottom, all that waste decomposition, decomposed material and whatnot, ends up somewhere. These waste management collects all of that, and they haul it to Gilmer County, to our small water treatment plant. Millions of gallons, okay, in excess, I think, when I say 150 million gallons of waste that came from landfills to our water treatment. And yet, that gets dumped into our local water. Now, when I see what the results are potentially, cancer, liver failure, birth defects, I'm concerned. And I really think that our priorities, I've been out of whack here for a long time, as you all are willing to take people's word for a lot of things.
What is your recommendation?
My recommendation is we do a full stop on all future development until we figure out what we're dealing with here. Because we can't break, we don't have a hospital to treat people for that level of potential catastrophic health. Okay, we have, we can be facing a super, you can, you all can roll your eyes if you'd like to, Mrs. Ferguson.
Let me ask you though, if we were to do that, as I understand it, the problem is that you described as 150 million gallons coming in from the counties. If we were to do as you say, and stop all development and not allow anything, how does that stop 150 million gallons that's coming in?
Well, we obviously have to do a full audit, we begin with our water authority. We find out, first of all, since nobody has any idea who does the oversight, because some people say it's this, or by, some people say, I don't even think they know who we've got these done, to tell you the truth.
It's EPD.
If it's the EPD, then we need to sit down with the EPD, we need to have a discussion, a very serious one with the EPD, about how we're, how we're going to prevent this from happening in the future, because I don't think that we need to be handling Alabama's leaching fluids. I mean, that's, we're talking about, this is a fluid that they call a witch's brew, it cannot be broken down by dumping in the water. We think the chicken plant water was an issue in our waters? That can at least be naturally violated, this dog cannot be, it has to be treated specially to prevent cancers, liver disease.
And that's what they're supposed to be doing.
And it's not being done, but it's not, we don't have the capabilities, we don't have the chemicals, we don't have the...
But how do you know these things?
Because I've done investigation, I'm a concerned citizen, I'm not coming up here, green in the hills here, I'm, maybe I am, and I don't even know it, drinking water. But I've done my research, I do my research, and I'm telling you, as sure as I stand here today, I'm not drinking the water here, I'm not going to Longmont or any ice tea, I'm not taking a, taking a toll on that water, and so I know that I'm safe, my family's safe, and our business is safe.
First, I would mention that we have no authority over these folks at all. We can't require anything of them, they're their own entity. The oversight for them is EPD. And EPD, their job is to make sure that that water that's been dumped back in has been treated to the extent that it is safe. If that's not the case, they've made it abundantly clear to us on any number of occasions and any number of different situations that they're perfectly willing to fine us something thousand dollars a day until...
Fifty thousand dollars a day.
But they have come out, they checked it all out, and they've said, no, everything is as it should be. Now, that's their official verdict on it.
The official verdict is the permits were never submitted to conduct this treatment, okay? The official verdict is that people in Carter's Lake, when it started downstream, okay, they began to have problems with their, when they're fishing, just right around the end of their fishing, Alice Stone, out there fishing, right? Began to get concerned, because he started noticing changes in the fishing, he knows fishing, I know nothing about fishing, but whatever it was, it wasn't him. So then he contacted people, people outside, scientists, to come out and take a look. They made a determination then that there was an issue, okay, so we know there is an issue.
And who's that reported to, when they get there?
I believe it was EPD. They have, on their own group, there are several public initiatives where we, where people are concerned about health, public health and safety, environmental concerns. They've all begun to form consortium to determine where the source is and what the problem is. And right now, Mr. Paris, all the eyes are on Gilmer County and our water authority in particular. So you can deal with that what you want, but I'm not drinking your water, I don't even want to be in it.
Thank you.
This is Hannah Kirsten.
Yes, sir.
My name is Gordon Claxton. I live off of Carter K. Coe Road Drive, which is off of the roadhead road. I spoke to Jim better than six months ago about the road conditions going down the road. The gullies and ruts in this, would rattle your teeth out today. It's been going on for over a year. I'm getting to the point that when I call his office, I speak to her very nicely, I guess she has caller ID, but she says, hello, Mr. Claxton. I was calling on a weekly basis to examine the proverbial waterway. Well, we have the COVID issue going on, well, we have a lack of equipment, all we have, blah, 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 blah. This goes back almost a year, and out of darkness, it's been done, Jim.
Let me...
I guess he's too busy writing his notes.
Well, let me intervene here and just ask, Jim, how quickly can we get this done on that road?
Well, I thought that Carter K. Coe Roadhead had been done.
Well, then you're getting the wrong information, Jim, because no one has gone down that road. The only people that have scraped that road has been our own personal friends that have our own tractors. I dug the gully out that crosses...
To answer your question tomorrow. Okay, if my, let's say an excuse to you, that road hasn't been graded and gravelled, please call me.
I certainly will, I appreciate it, I beg it, like I said, it's kind of a personal thing. I don't know who else to talk to now, since like I said, I had this gentleman call everything six months ago, and it seemed to have...
Well, I love these kind of things because I can actually fix this, so. Just, they'll come out tomorrow, but if by next...
I'm more than willing to wait till the middle of next week.
If by next Tuesday it's not fixed, please call me. Yes, sir, thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Eddie Roll, and I live on River East Drive in Tuller, Jen. And I am wanting to apologize for the session meeting that I was at there this morning. I'm not a speaker, I don't like being in front of people, but I'm just talking to y'all, and I would thank you for your, Jonathan Graves, Hobby Lobby Farm. And the point that I wanted to make, or what I was concerned about was where the barn is located, like in this property, on the downslope, there is a creek that runs, is a dirt road down to our driveway. The water goes under the driveway and then a river edge drive to another creek bed that feeds into the pond in our neighborhood, that feeds into the Carter K. Room.
Let me ask one thing, David, now, is this is already decided, is it over?
It is, it is decided, and I just wanted to talk, but I just wanted, my concern is, I love this beautiful city. I love living here, and I just don't want to see anything destroyed, you know? And I understand you know people, because I'm not here, because I come from a family that, you know, did farming and everything and living off the land. But, you know, in a community that's residential, I just feel like anyone six acres should have a farm, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Very brief, my name is Kate Whitehouse, but I'm a resident of Gilmer County. I attended the first meeting of the Planning and zoning last month, which I found very interesting. One of the things that I found very interesting is I had the chance to speak, actually twice, and I spoke rather passionately, with very respect to them. While speaking to the members of the Planning and Zoning, I could only give one gentleman to make eye contact with. The others sat there, looking at him, yawning, turning the other way. In other words, not listening to the citizens. Each and every one of you are looking at me right now, I greatly appreciate it. I'm curious to know how much actual collaboration you have with Planning and Zoning when these issues come before you, but you have to go ahead and vote them off after they've been voted on.
We don't really have any collaboration with them, we either attend meetings and see, you know, if there was going on, or typically we'll listen to a recording of a meeting. In terms of whatever they decide, whether to recommend approval or denial, we do take that into consideration, and particularly in cases where they recommend a denial, the thing we want to understand is why. And then we make our own choice on it, we'll either go with what they suggest, and sometimes we don't. But there's no actual collaboration between us, and honestly, I don't think it would be proper if there was.
Yeah, so Charlie, there is, there is and was during the work session, you know, they had work sessions, and we were there, was on changing the ordinance, not their actual meetings, but their...
Yeah, I think that was a different thing, though. Nothing was coming down to that for us to vote on, really, in terms of...
Well, that was in the early stages of the ordinance changes, so there was the, I don't, I want to be truthful, I was there.
So... So then the collaboration would be that we discuss whether potential ordinance changes, not individuals' own requests, and that's it.
Correct, yes.
When you do see denials, do you absolutely go to recordings and go for it, or sometimes?
Well, we will, we most always go there, sometimes there's a written summary, and we'll look at that. But we do want to know, what was your reason for recommending denial?
I don't want to get into any specifics about, for instance, Mr. Graves, I know there were some residents that had some concerns on this one. However, I do want to, it's still to me a little bit hard to fathom what I heard at that meeting when one member of this unplanning zoning virtually lectured Mr. Graves about the fact that he should have done his due diligence and come to the board, the planning and zoning, prior to trying to buy that property, to find out if he'd be able to do what he wanted to do with it. However, one of their own members, Mr. Sisson, did the same thing, did the exact same thing. He bought that property without going to the person to see if it was going to be approved. He had no plans, and he made the, it's the audacity of him to tell people in this room that it was impossible for him to put plans together unless he got approval? No, it was costly for him to put plans together unless he got approval. I can put plans together on anything if I'm going to spend the money.
I understand that a lot of people see a connection between these two. Honestly, I don't think there is. The reasons for denial in Mr. Graves' case did not exist in Mr. Sisson's case.
I did not see those reasons, and they didn't portray those reasons then to people who were here. The main reason that was given by the one gentleman I'm speaking of was that's what, that's the process it should have taken.
Well, let me ask you this, and because I hear it from both sides. What I hear is, we did our due diligence, we did our research. Before we put our money down for this property, we verified that everything around it was R1. And we went ahead and bought it because we knew then that we weren't going to have to deal with some of the issues that you deal with for livestock. So those people are saying, we did our due diligence, we made sure everything was proper, we put down our money, and now you're being asked to negate that. So it's kind of the same situation, but from the other side. And I don't really see a good, a good solution to that. I think everybody that buys property should do their due diligence. And if we have one group that, that did, and then decided to buy because everything worked out, and then somebody comes in and buys one of those parcels and wants to change it to what these folks who did their due diligence would have walked away from, I see their point, too.
I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
I could just ask one other question.
Sure.
How do you, how do you become, how do you get involved with Plating and Zoning? How does some of it, it's not an elected position?
It's not an elected position. Involvement generally goes with coming to the meetings, making your opinions heard. We have a really good example of that right here with Ms. Reckless. She decided to get involved, and she very much is. And so when she comes to these meetings, she tells us the way she sees it. And, you know, sometimes, you know, I'll sit here and think, well, yeah, you're right. Not always, but because no two people are always going to agree. But the first thing would be, come to the meetings. Express your opinions, even if you think you're beating your head against the wall. You may change some attitudes up there, you may not. At some point, somebody will decide to leave that board, and you can volunteer. And then you're really involved. We don't have a lot of volunteers for that. It's, it's a pretty tough job. Very, very little appreciation for those of us. But I think the thing to do would be to come to the meetings, get to know what's going on, get to know the board members, if not personally, at least in terms of how you think they're likely to look at things. Let them know when you feel that something is not right, like this situation. Whether you win or lose on it, you know, come back next month and go do the same thing. And then, you know, when it opens in our eyes, is volunteer for it. Which of course wouldn't guarantee that you would get it, but guarantees you won't if you don't. So. I'm sorry.
Do you know where you go to volunteer?
Call me.
Perfect.
Yeah. In fact, if you'd like to maybe send me an email with your contact information on it, I'll just put you in the file and let it here to volunteer.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Do you have my email address?
No, but I'm sure I can get it.
Send the paper in, and the paper on the website.
The page is on the, on the site, too.
I would say that one of the things that got me in this job was I started attending the board meetings. And I attended all the board meetings, just like all y'all there, for well over a year. And I finally went home one day and told my wife, I had to stop going, or I got to run for the election. I thought, I had been attending these meetings for over a year. I thought there was nothing in this county I wasn't ready to take on. I know everything, because I've been going to every meeting. I knew nothing. Because you don't have any idea of all the things that go down in this county that never comes through this meeting. And let me tell you, it was a surprise to me. And it will be for you if, you know, you get into the situation, so.
Well, thank y'all for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. I appreciate it, too, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving around along. Discussion and possible action of boundary medical LLC, I forget. IQ license, I don't remember. How we make a motion that may be approved? All in favor? Aye. Discussion and possible action of approval of Gilmore County Point of Disconclusion Plan? I make a motion that may be approved? All in favor? Aye. Discussion and possible action of authorizing a monthly expense amount to the Superior Court? Is Amy here tonight? Okay. Were we having some discussion on that, or are we ready to move to the motion? Would you be okay if I put a motion to deny? Based on the counties surrounding us and the fact that no one else is doing that, I would make a motion to that may be denied.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action of bypass golf course equipment lease? Motion that may be approved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action of the road paving list that a gentleman has presented to us?
Let's go get you go ahead and make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, before we talk about the painting list, I'd like to give you a report that we, I didn't have for you yesterday on the Carter Cave Bridge.
Okay, good.
I received notification today that the Ridgeway acquisition was completed in January of this year. The final field plan review is anticipated in July of this year. And construction originally programmed for 2025 has been moved to December 22.
Like that? Good.
The construction time is 18 months. Also, as I've cited, the two bridges that brought up such fuel on 52, Leek Flaw Creek and Carter Cave, has now been moved to 2028.
Well, I'm okay with that, too. All right. Thank you, Jim, that's, that is good information. And with that. With that, I make a motion to approve the list. All in favor? Aye. So I would make a motion that we go into executive session with no action anticipated. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, folks, we appreciate it.